Air and oxygen. Healthcare workers in particular, wear masks for very long periods of time, day in and day out, without dead dull curious effects. Commonly used masks do not cause or exacerbate any respiratory diseases. Masks simply block the passage of water droplets, potentially carrying viral particles from going from one person to another. The quality of the mask does matter. But two-layer cloth masks, surgical masks, and N95 or K95 masks, provide some amount of protection if worn properly and universally. While there are some individuals who, for certain medical reasons or behavioral issues, may not be able to wear masks at all time, the overwhelming majority of children tolerated masks well and did so without complication last year. Children are extremely resilient, particularly when they have role models who model the behavior we are asking them to perform. There are certainly accommodations that can be made in appropriate circumstances. And as these accommodations may make some children and staff at more risk, it is even more important that everyone else be masked while indoors. I cannot stress enough that any small risk universal masking may pose. It is nothing compared to the real risk of the infection itself. Infections will require students to remain home and undoubtedly undoubtedly will cause quarantines, school closures, and returns to remote learning strategies. Furthermore, severe infections requiring hospitalization of any child will have far more consequences in both the short and long term than any of the proposed preventative measures. To be clear, the Delta variant proposes poses a greater threat than any prior version of the coronavirus to date. Other variants may be even worse. However, we have it in us to keep our children safe and our schools open. It is our obligation to not only the education of our children, but their protection. I fully support universal masking in addition to appropriate physical distancing and hand hygiene as key to that protection. I thank you for your time and I open up and I'm open to any questions from the board.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jarvis. We really appreciate you coming and speaking with us today.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Matt, do we have anybody on Zoom? That'd be lovely. If you could please state your name and your address, please.
My name's Monique Schwartz, 21 16th Street. I didn't really come prepared to say anything tonight, but I'm a nurse and I've worked in the healthcare field for the past, you know, 18 months. I'm not vaccinated, managed to keep myself and my family safe from COVID. We practice hand hygiene. We do all the things that we're supposed to do. But really, I had a freshman last year, freshman girl, it's a very difficult time going into high school. And my son is going to be a freshman this year. It was difficult, a difficult time for the kids, difficult time for a girl. Not a lot of socialization, not a lot of kids that were able to talk to each other. My daughter came home every day saying she felt lonely, separated six feet apart, trying to talk to her friends and eat lunch. It was just, it was awful. I'd like to ask how many kids have actually died in the state of Maine with COVID? Do you know that statistic or?
If it was one, that's one too many.
Okay, how many kids died from influenza in the past few years?
So Ms. Schwartz, if if you could direct your your comments to us, I mean, none of us here want to have any child die?
Sure.
I mean.
So let's talk about influenza. Kids are a much higher risk from dying at influenza. None of these precautions were taken for that. I just think it's absolutely ridiculous. We're jeopardizing the mental health of our children. My daughter in particular was very much traumatized from the fact that she had very little friends, social contact, had to wear a mask all the time, had to wonder what her friends' faces looked like underneath the mask. They were making fun of her. She's not popular. She has some issues, so it was quite a difficult year for her. I guess I just want to say that I think that our children are at very low risk of contracting or maybe not contracting. Sure, it's going to be a common cold type of symptom for them. I don't think we're going to see if we've seen any deaths of children at all in the state of Maine. They're not affected like elderly population, people that have underlying conditions who are at risk. I think it should be a choice. I think it should be a parent's choice. If our kids have to wear a mask, it should not be mandated. I'm dealing with this myself. Now I'm going to be mandated to take a vaccine. Not going to do it. It should be the individual's right and choice, freedom of choice. Should not be mandated and affecting our kids' education.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Schwartz. We appreciate you speaking. Oh, okay.
Chair Sichters, we have some people who would like to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, Member Hassan. And we have Rachel Booker. Rachel, if you are, if you are a student, since I can't see you, please do not give us your address, but if you are an adult, if you could give your name and address, that would be lovely. Rachel Booker? The floor is yours. I see her pop up. You're you're on mute? Ms. Booker, you're on mute?
She said she's having microphone.
I got it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Thank you so much.
Good. My name is Rachel Booker. I am a parent of a student at the James F. Dowdy School. My address is 35 Wiley Street in Bangor. I am also a nurse. In fact, I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner. So I can speak to not only the medical side of things, but also the mental health side of things. And while I'm aware that other parents may have other ideas of their children's mental health, I can assure you that kids are resilient. They will come through this, this, hush, sorry, my dog wants to speak as well. Kids are resilient. They will come through this with no more lasting trauma than did children who came of age during the depression. And ultimately, the bottom line is we cannot manage our children's mental health if we do not manage their physical health. I live in a family of people who are immunocompromised and the thought that my child is going to have to return to school with no remote learning option offered unless he chooses to leave the Bangor school system and attend a whole different school is heartbreaking to me. I'm deeply concerned about it, particularly at a time when, as Dr. Jarvis said, we're seeing increasing rates of the Delta variant, increasing risks to all of our, all of our citizens of Maine. And the thought that you would be taking this option away is is devastating, to be perfectly honest.
Thank you very much, Ms. Booker. We have another comment from Noah Nesson. Dr. Nesson, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I live in Glenburn, so I want to, I want to double check to make sure it's okay for me to speak since I'm not a resident of Bangor, but I am a family doctor and the chief medical officer of Pabst County Health, Community Healthcare in Bangor.
Yes.
Great, thank you. I won't repeat the the great information that Dr. Jarvis provided or the perspective that Rachel just gave, both of which I agree with completely. I want to add that as the Delta variant is a different ballgame than what we've dealt with before. It's two or three times as infectious as the original Alpha variant that we were dealing with when we told people that it was largely the elderly and the vulnerable who were susceptible to severe infection. We now know that children are increasingly becoming infected with the Delta variant, making up 18 to 20% of the infections in Maine. Thirty some of them have been hospitalized thus far in Maine. And we don't know what's going to happen as schools open and this and this pandemic is surging once again in Maine. The the Delta variant and people who become exposed and become infected has viral load in the throat a thousand times higher than the viral load of the Alpha variant. So it's very, very likely that children will become spreaders of this disease as well as being susceptible to illness themselves, including some of them, a minority, but but when when there's broad spread, broad spread infection, it's not a small number. A minority will could become severely ill. Some will require a hospitalization. And there's a risk of death. Moreover, these children can spread the disease in their households and among their contacts. And the Delta variants are not value is eight, which is, which is much higher than the are not value, the number of people that one person can infect when they're infected is eight for the Delta variant. For influenza, it's like it's it's a much lower than that, much lower than one. And for the Alpha variant, it ended up, I believe, being between one and two. So this is a much higher risk variant. The longer, the longer this pandemic goes on, the more disease spread there is, the more risk of even worse variants developing. And I think it's prudent not to put children at risk with the unknowns that we're facing and with the likelihood that they're going to become increasingly infected and be spreaders of the disease as well. I'm thankful that the that the Bangor School Department has taken a careful, cautious approach. And I'm thankful for the care that you've shown for the children in the Bangor School System.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nesson. Matt, if you, if you see anybody else that has any other public comment, if you could bring those. And in the meantime, I'd like to read one of the public comments that we received. Nothing? Okay. Good afternoon. This is from Dr. Margaret Riley. So she has the following questions for the school committee. Has Bangor decided about pooled testing of students and staff? If the decision was no, could you please explain the rationale? Number two, as case numbers rise and more children are affected with the COVID-19 Delta variant for our unvaccinated students under 12, could you comment on the rationale behind not continuing social distancing, specifically not limiting indoor interactions between students in different classes at lunch and specials? Since we do not answer questions at of public comment, we are going to do two things. Superintendent Tager will email the committee the answer and as well email Dr. Riley. And he will take the additional step of under the school reopening plan in the frequently asked question section, he will put these two questions and he will answer them. So that will be out there for the for the entire public to to get the answer. Are there any other comments? Is there anybody here that would like to make a comment? Yes, if you could please come forward and give your name and your address, please.
My name is Carrie Smith, and I live at 26 Lane Street in Bangor. I have a couple of comments, and then I do have a question that if we can add that to the to the questions. Just I I'm speaking kind of for a few friends who couldn't be here that have children that are younger, children that have medical issues. One of them wears glasses, which any of you who wears glasses, I'm sure you know how it's constantly fogging up. Also, he was just, he just had like cochlear implants. He's got some ear, you know, implants in. Also, some ADD, I mean, just has an extremely hard time wearing the mask, focusing. She's a nurse. He's a doctor. They follow all the protocols. She doesn't think that she can send him to Bangor. So the the concern is just for these kids who either cannot wear a mask, cannot focus with a mask. What are our options this year? You know, and then also obviously, we're seeing that with over 60% of Mainers fully vaccinated, we're still having outbreaks in the summer, which is not common at all for a virus like this. So we assume through the winter months, we're probably going to have outbreaks. Are Bangor school kids going to stay in if we make the commitment to wear masks? Without a choice, are they going to stay in? If they're sent home with no remote option, what's that plan look like? Also, I mean, we're seeing in in other states, there there have been like outbreaks with three quarters of them being fully vaccinated. So even the kids who can get vaccinated, the answer just isn't the masks or vaccination. I just, I'm hoping Bangor has a plan for when there is an outbreak because summer is an unusual time for an outbreak for a virus like this. So we're coming up up against winter months. Are our kids going to stay in school? You know, I think most parents are willing to make the commitment of masks because like what's been said before, kids are resilient. They will wear masks. Mine didn't complain mostly about them. So a no mask is not really my argument. It's just what's the plan? When there's an outbreak, are our kids going to be able to stay in school? So, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. And we will make sure that we get it kind of sounds like there's more than like three questions. Yeah, out and and on the on the website, because those are some really, you make some really good points. So thank you for that. And I think, yes. So if you could please state your name and your address.
Jackie Smallwood, 1211 Essex Street in Bangor. My daughter's going to be a senior at the high school. And I will openly admit I am 100% against masks. And a week ago, I probably would have stood here and made the argument against masks. But how quickly our world has changed just in a week. And my daughter even said the other night, I would, I'll just put the mask on if I can have my senior year. And that too is my question. If we succumb to the masks and the kids put the mask on, can they get through the year? Can they not have the quarantine? And if they get sent home every other week, will they be remote learned because they can't learn statistics on their own? And that's my concern. I would love to see. My daughter will go to school with the mask on if she can have the peace of mind to know that she will be able to stay in her class, stay with her friends, have a normal year, and we can do the masks without the pool testing, without everything that comes with it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. Smallwood. That, I I think that, you know, we're going to be looking over the plan today. And I think there's going to be a lot of questions and we're going to be putting a lot of answers out there. I mean, as the parent of a recent graduate, I I I mean, that was, it was a tough year. It was up and down a lot, but just the fact that we were able to give our students a year, we hope to do the same thing. So. Any other questions? Yes, please. And state your name and your address.
Can't breathe, can't speak in this. My name is Jamie Thomas. My address is 40 Deer Go Drive in Bangor. I'm the parent of a he's going to be in sixth grade at Dowdy this year. And again, I'm like everybody else who's been up recently. I'm completely against masks. I don't think there's any actual scientific data that supports the wearing of masks or that it actually helps to not transmit the virus. My biggest concern as well is what to do in the case of remote learning. In fourth grade, my son, well, first of all, he requires an IEP. He does require some special education services, all of which were not provided to him during that fourth grade year when we first went remote, which, as far as I understand, he's legally required to receive those services. So my biggest concern is if we have to go remote, first, are we going to have adequate time to prepare for that? Because there was at least one week when, I think there was a bus driver shortage. The morning of, I had to completely restructure my entire day so that he could be set up with me at work to remote learn. It's not enough time for, I'm a single working mom. Clearly not enough notice. I understand things that are kind of out of control and that can happen and, you know, whatever, but honestly, adequate notice for remote days would be appreciated. Also, IEP services have got to be provided to students in the case of remote learning. My son struggles, and which is why he requires these in the first place. And to completely have fallen behind at risk of having to repeat his fifth grade year because he did not receive those services was completely unacceptable for me as a parent, especially a single parent who works full time and does my very best to help him in school. So it's very difficult to help an already struggling child when the school is not either not able or not willing to provide those services.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas. Again, you all, everybody is bringing up some really good points and things that we are going to look at and we're going to address. Planning is is obviously going to be a big one. You know, I think, I think we're all trying to do our best in sort of the short amount of time, the the incidents that you were referring to. It was, there was not enough bus drivers. They they had COVID. So we were all in the same position. So we're going to make sure that we do some great planning this year. And we have Superintendent Tager on board and who's doing a deep dive. And we've got some phenomenal support staff that are gonna hopefully, a year from now, we're going to say, wow, we did an amazing job. So. Any other questions? Anything online? Okay, excellent. Thank you all very much for for speaking. If you would like to stay, you are absolutely welcome. And if you do not want to, you're also welcome to leave. So we have some superintendents proposals and updates, action items?
Give a brief on the reopening plan before I ask, make a recommendation. What I, a couple of things I'd like for folks to know is that we have a planning committee that's met two different times.
Now it is.
Good. Okay, thank, thank you, Chairman Sichters. I'm going to give a couple of little updates on the reopening plan and then ask for a recommendation. We've had a planning committee that has met, I arrived here July 1st. We've met twice. On that committee, we have parents, we have faculty, staff, principals, nurses, school committee members. And we've talked a lot about our reopening plan. I do want you to know when I read the recommendation that this is something that changes all the time, like every 24 hours. So I myself did not think we would be in masks this year after last year, but it is where we are right now. We have followed, we're 17 months into this pandemic right now, and we do have the goal of in-person learning. The CDC, National and Maine CDC and the DOE are all recommending masks in school for all. So we are mandate, we are, I'm going to recommend that we mandate masks for students, faculty, staff, and visitors. The fact that we can have visitors, we're a place ahead of we were last year. Besides talking with the planning committee, I spoke with all of our principals to kind of see if we'd get a buy-in through K through 12th grade and everybody else feels that we should follow the CDC guidelines as well. I've heard some questions about remote, and I will answer those questions in our Q and A and send those on our website and where we have our reopening plan. So you can look for those in the next couple of days. There is a CDC exemption when people are talking about missing days of school. There is an, if you are fully masked and have a fully masked mandate, students that are masked in it as long as they are outside of three feet will not have to quarantine like they did last year. So they'd be able to stay in school. So that's a benefit of having the mask. Also, students that are vaccinated, I'm going to go over those rates in a minute, would not lose their co or extra curriculars. We want more of a normal school year this year, although none of this is normal. I'm not going to try to tell anybody anything that's not true. We will have no masks outside. That was something that really bothered me last year when students had to have masks on outside. We will not have those. It's not part of the CDC recommendation. We filed the recommendation all the way through this, so I feel like we have to ride it out. The dashboard too. If you look at the latest one I've seen is August 17, 2021, State of Maine COVID-19 Vaccination Dashboard. While we do have a number of students that are vaccinated, the number for Pabst County is 40.40%. If you were to take a look at that, and a big concern of ours is students who are under 12. If you look at all school-aged students, the percentage is 18.82%. So that certainly went into our thinking as well. What I would tell you is this, my commitment is to meet with that planning committee monthly. And as we can loosen our requirements, we will do that. But as you know, it's easier to start with something that we feel like makes everybody safe as can be. I'm not a good sleeper. I feel like in my heart, this is the right thing to do. I certainly will look at this monthly, and as we get better statistics from our medical folks, we would love to loosen our mandate. The goal is in-person learning. The last comment I want to make is at all 11 of our schools, and I could also probably generally say across the country, the students that learned the most last year were in-person. The students that were in second place were hybrid, and the students that learned the least were remote. Now, certainly there's exceptions to all of those categories, but that is what our data showed us. What I'm going to do at this point is I'm recommending conceptual approval of the reopening plan, giving the changing conditions related to COVID-19 and expected revised guidance from Maine Department of Education and Maine CDC. It must be understood the reopening plan will need constant review and revision.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Member Caruso.
One thing I I'd like to start is is the remarkable year that Bangor had last year. As difficult as it was, we were the only community in the state that I know of that offered three pathways for education. There was an in-person option, a remote option, and a hybrid option. And we started out with about 65% of our student body in person, and we ended over 80%. So we did it right. And we did it, we did something that no one else did. And and for that, we should be very proud. And though it was difficult, and though it wasn't perfect, we understand that. But we should take great pride in what we did, because as far as I've looked, I can't find another community in the country that that offered that opportunity. And and the work that went in last summer with the reopening group and our former superintendent, Dr. Betsy Webb, was was just incredible to set us up to have options for all the families, to meet them where they wanted to be and and had a what we would consider a successful year, not perfect, but successful. And I want to commend our administrators and our staff and our interim superintendent for the work they did. And I think that can be the same that said that the work's been put in this summer is that we've looked at the situation the best we can. That's changed dramatically in the last 30 days and and responded to that. And if this sacrifice we have to make is to wear a mask to have a regular year or a more regular year, certainly a step in that direction, I think we're all on board for that. And I think the comments that were made of of the resiliency of children, and again, this is not 100%. Not every child can fit into the same box. But from a large scale of things, in the best interest of 3,500 families and students, this is the right choice. And and again, if we were a public, if we were a private school, choice probably would be a better because they'd have a choice to go to public, the private school or not to. But this is a public school system with 3,500 families, 600 employees. In the best interest of all, masks is the right decision, given the statistics from scientific experts. And so for that reason, I'll support the reopening plan. Certainly understand it's going to be a a moving target at times. But I think all of us here are committed to having that normal year. And again, I think we've all lost perspective of what normal is at this point. But if the only thing we're doing is wearing masks so that we can have our students in the school, I think that's a small sacrifice, and I think every student would wear that in order to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Member Caruso. Yes, Member Mundell.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the parents who came up to speak. The 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 comments about kids being remote and not having IEP services is very concerning to me. And and I think that's something I've heard from, I've heard from other parents as well. And I think that's something we really need to address this year. We've had time to 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 look at, you know, to look at what's going on with that. And I I'm hoping with the extra supports that we're getting in this year that And I, I'm hoping with the extra supports that we're getting in this year, that, that, that can, can improve. So I, I appreciate your comments about that. I, as a psychologist, I also worry about, you know, the social impacts of masking on kids' social development, especially the really young kids. But, you know, I, I commend Dr. Jarvis and Dr. Nesson for giving us what, what the science tells us is the right thing to do. I know the CDC also takes into account, you know, the, the psychological costs of, of masking. And, you know, I'm not a scientist. I trust the experts and, and I thank you for your perspectives. That was very helpful. And I think we need to, we need to do what the experts recommend. So. And I, I agree with Member Caruso that our kids are resilient. And, you know, I think in some ways they have adapted to this better than we have. So I, I, I think they'll be okay.
Thank you very much. I know that we have a comment, or Member Hassanin?
Yes, can you all hear me fine? Okay, so I too would like to thank all the parents that spoke today, whether you are opposed or for and supportive of masking. And for those who have questions, very legitimate questions. So I thank you all for coming today and expressing your, your opinions and how you and your family see this. So while I do believe in choice, I do believe in medical freedom. I don't believe any of us should judge one another for our values and religious and medical needs. But I also respect science and the opinions of our medical experts. I appreciate Dr. Jarvis and Dr. Nesson taking time out of their busy schedules to come tonight and speak to us. Those statistics are staggering. You know, it's, it's scary, terrifying for all of us. My husband's also a physician. He intubates people for a living. So, you know, I, I, it's all too real for my family, especially having gone through COVID and having the father who's fighting, you know, being off the ventilator. So, you know, and personally, as an elected official, I feel like I have the civic responsibility of, and I have taken an oath to protect our students and our entire community. As a matter of fact, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree with me, I believe this is the best choice. And I think Superintendent Tag, Tagger for recommending this. It is, it is very inconvenient. Yes, I agree. My, I have children who absolutely hate masking, but they understand the importance of it. I believe this is the best decision to ma, made to protect our staff and our faculty and our, especially our students who are, are, you know, most precious things to us. We need to come together, please, as a community, to take precautions and to really work together to keep our schools open. And the real enemy here is COVID-19. So let's all work together to really have a wonderful school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Hassanin. Member Saret?
Thank you. And I, first I want to start by, by thanking community members, parents and Dr. Nesson and Dr. Jarvis for your comments tonight. It's very much appreciated and it's important for us to hear a variety of perspectives. I am in support of the reopening plan, including the universal masking requirement. And, and the reason why, there's three reasons that I, I want to explain as to why I, I'm in support. One, an organization that I have great respect for, the American Academy of Pediatrics, does recommend universal masking for students. The second reason is because roughly sixty percent of our student population are unable at this time to be vaccinated. So any child in the Bangor School Department between the ages of four and eleven, unfortunately, at this time are unable to, to be vaccinated. So that's the second reason. The third reason I'm, I'm in support is the, the amount of community spread that's going on right now as compared to last summer. So if you go back to August of 2020, we, we had anywhere between twenty and twenty to forty cases per day statewide. Last August, this August, it's, it's anywhere between a hundred and fifty to two hundred cases statewide, so four to five times as many. So there is a, a great deal of community spread, unfortunately, because of the Delta variant. And, and that's a, that's a third reason why I am supportive of, of these types of mitigation strategies such as, as masking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Saret. And Member Sorg?
Not to be left out. First of all, I'd like to thank all parents and family members and doctors for coming this evening and giving us your viewpoints. I feel personally, as a retired health and physical education teacher, masking is the right way to go at this time. Mainly because I believe the CDC, I do my homework, I read what's on Facebook and other sections on internet and I shake my head. Most importantly of all, I'd like all of us to do our homework. I realize the psychological disadvantages of wearing a mask. I hate it. I have to have it on tonight. I hate it. I'd rather be outside working in my garden, fresh air, sunshine. It is important, I realize, for kids with disabilities, having raised one and having a grandson with one, putting on a mask is extremely challenging. They fight it all the way, but it can be done. So I'm in full agreement with Mr. Taggert. I think he's come up with a good plan. It will be constantly adjusted on a weekly basis as the need comes. As a retired teacher, we always started off tough with discipline, better off to start tough with the mask and be able to take it off, rather than come the end of October and say, no, we got to mask up and have resistance then. So I understand those people who are against it. I understand your predicament and I understand your feelings and your emotions. However, at this time, for the safety and well-being of all students, staff at Bangor High School and throughout the Bangor system, I agree with Mr. Taggert's plan a hundred percent.
Thank you, Member Sorg. And I, I, I would just like to say that this, this has been a very difficult year. I'm on the reopening plan and it was a very different conversation six weeks ago. I hope like Ms. Smallwood, that, you know, we're going to be able to do as much as possible like normal. And I, I agree with all of my school committee members, this is the way that we're going to do it. I know a neighboring school district had seventy-three student days last year. And they're academically struggling and that same school district is not wearing masks. So I, I worry for those children who are not going to be able, they're, they're going to get sent home again if there is, if there is a problem, if there's an outbreak. Whereas by wearing masks, we're going to be stopping that. So we're going to be able to give as many students as possible the opportunity to participate in after-school activities and in the learning, which I mean, truth be told, that's what school is. So I, I really, really appreciate everybody who spoke today because we're going to be able to take that information and we're going to be able to put that in a plan. And we're going to be able to look at those very specific things, you know, specifically to address, you know, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Smith's, your, your questions and concerns and look at that and make sure that we're going to do right. So thank you all for, for coming and speaking and thank you for putting together this plan for us tonight. So with that said, a roll call vote, please.
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Saret?
Yes.
Chair Sichters?
Yes.
Carrie six zero.
So next we have a local delegate to the MSBA.
The committee should nominate a local delegate and alternate to the MSBA Annual Delegate Assembly, scheduled virtually for October 23rd, 2021 at nine thirty AM. The Delegate Assembly is responsible for proposed constitution and bylaw changes and considers resolutions of the association. So we're looking for a member that will be willing to do that.
Are there any members who, do we have to vote? We need to, to, to vote it? Okay. I need a motion. Oh.
A member who's willing.
A member who's willing first. Okay. Is there anybody who is willing to serve on this? And we could delay it until the next meeting in order to give everybody an opportunity to look at the dates and look at the commitment? If we would prefer to just wait? I'm seeing some nodding of heads.
I did it last year and I'm willing to give someone else an opportunity and be like a, be the backup person.
Okay. Yeah, so if, if everybody could just kind of look over, Superintendent Taggert, I believe, has an email that's going to be going out to everybody so that we can all look at that. I think it's already been said.
Tonight too, we'll get to that in a few minutes.
Okay. So if everybody could think about that and then we'll vote on that next week.
We need to, because it's on the agenda, I believe we need to move to table that second.
And discussion, if we could do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Saret? Chair Sichters?
Yes. Next, we have an interim principal at Bangor High School.
I am recommending committee approval to appoint Bangor High School Assistant Principal Brian Doyle as interim principal temporarily.
I need a motion? And is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yeah.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Saret?
Yes.
Chair Sichters?
Yes.
Carrie six oh.
Informational.
Excuse me. Why we take a moment to invite those individuals that were here for the opening plan? Maybe they do not want to stay for the rest of the meeting and this would be an opportunity for them to exit.
You mean, you don't want to stay and hang out with us longer? Thank you for coming. Informational items, acceptance of resignation.
I have accepted the resignation of school committee member John Hyatt as of August ninth, 2021.
And this is just an informational item that we do not need to vote on. So, and then we have a, a discussion on student school committee, having a student school committee member.
Yes, that, that will be brief. I think it would be important to have a student for you to consider having a student voice to sit on our, our school committee. I'm suggesting that we have a junior and a senior to sit on this committee. They would not be voting members, but they would be able to provide us the student voice. They could provide us updates as to what's happening at the school. I would work with the interim principal to select a couple of students who could possibly do this. In my past two jobs as a superintendent, I've had that experience and it's been a very positive one, both for the students and for the school committee. If you are interested, I could have it as an action item at our next meeting.
So, yes, Member Caruso.
I would need to learn more, but the question I have tonight is, is that in our bylaws in order to have that opportunity? And if it's not, then the first step will be to change those bylaws to allow that to happen. And we would need a vote, obviously, for that.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Member Caruso. Anybody else? Member Hassanin?
I, I absolutely love this idea. I, we had a student representation in our superintendent search. And I think their voices are valuable, they're priceless and they, they, they really bring a different perspective that we all need to listen to. So I'm in full support of that.
Excellent. Thank you. Member Mundell?
Yeah, I agree. I love this idea and I think, you know, I think it's great to have an avenue for the student voice to be heard. Because it also kind of reduces the noise among students in the community. And I think empowering student representatives could just be a really great thing for the, the culture of the school department. So I'm all for it.
Thank you, Member Sorg?
Yes, I believe Member Caruso is correct. We need to check our bylaws. That should be done first and I am in support of it. I think it would be a great idea. If it's not in our bylaws, we need to put it in.
Excellent. Thank you. Member Saret?
Sure. Yeah, I, I'm supportive in my role at the University of Maine in Augusta. I served as the faculty representative to the Board of Trustees, the University of Maine System Board of Trustees. And, and there's a long, for a long time, there's been a student trustee. And they do, they provide a valuable point of view, perspective. They were the, the ones that I worked with, did a lot of speaking during meetings. And, and I know that the other trustees really appreciated hearing from them. So I, I'm supportive and I, I look forward to going through the process to make it happen.
Excellent. Thank you. And, and we just really wanted to see what the committee thought. And so Superintendent Taggert will look at the bylaws and, and then we can bring that to the full committee.
So just one more question for Superintendent Taggert. I'm assuming, and just for clarity, that they would, the, the student representatives would not be attending any executive session or special meeting. Correct?
Correct.
For meetings.
That, that is correct. And the other thing I would look for is a junior and a senior, so the junior could rotate up and we'll bring in another junior the next year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the Esser Grant.
Assistant Superintendent Kathy Harris Smedberg will provide a report to the committee on the Esser Grant.
And, thank you. I have some slides to go with you. As Mr. Stansfield is setting up, I will give you just a little brief outline. This is kind of one of our stakeholder meetings. It is not something that requires your vote or, but it does require me to get feedback from a variety of different groups. So I'm going to go through this spiel and then you can also have time to give me your feedback. So this is the ARP Esser Grant. Sometimes people think ARP means like there's nothing to do with ARP for retired people. This is a grant that we are being provided. We, it is an application process. You can see it's the American Rescue Plan and then the elementary, secondary part. The second part explains what it is for is primarily to mitigate the effects of COVID, as well as make up for learning loss, address the social emotional health needs of students and to provide some updates and stuff on buildings, things like air quality and updates on buildings. We are scheduled to get about twelve point nine million dollars out of that amount. We have to spend twenty percent on what they call learning loss. You need to understand that learning loss does not necessarily mean remediation or interventions. It can mean any reasonable type of learning that they might have missed because of COVID. So for example, this summer, we bought these science boxes for kids just to get them kind of jazzed up about science and excited about learning and hands-on experiential stuff. It wasn't a remediation, it wasn't an intervention, but got kids excited about learning. And those things are things that we can do with this money. They have to provide, we have to provide a reopening plan and it has to show that we are in person and it has to be a continuity of learning, which we have, you just did that. I'm sorry, I'm kind of like turning back and forth here, just that we have it up. So part of the application process is seeking different stakeholders' opinions. So the ideas come through, we collate all the ideas, we do a prioritization, we look at our needs. And then the decision is finally made through administration with ultimately Mr. Taggert having that final say. Um, and then the decision is finally made through administration with ultimately Mr. Tager having that final say. I think every group that I've gone to, everybody has plans all of on their own to spend the money. So um, I think you'll find that this money will go through very quickly. Um, once the plan has been determined, we will post it on our website. I'm sorry, there are multiple pathways or what cost centers that the um money can be used for. First thing that I always hear is people say, well, can't you just um hire a whole bunch more new teachers to make class sizes really small? And no, we cannot. They have to hit all of these cost centers, or not all of them. They have to be fall within those cons cost centers. So um, we have to mitigate, have strategies to mitigate the effects of COVID. And we have to address how that has impacted our students. It can be addressing student social emotional needs, offering enrichment programs. It can be before, after, and during school. Uh, we support early childhood education, and it can be to avoid layoffs. We're not in that position that we would have anything under there because we had no plans to do layoffs of anybody. It is kind of a like a one-time thing for some communities that we're going to find problems with um losing staff. Um, they do really caution you on what we call the COVID cliff, and that's why we cannot use it to hire a bunch of just regular classroom teachers. And because basically what they would say is, well, you're using it for this, then we're going to drop your state allocation future years. Um. It also is to provide our preparedness and readiness. For example, if we should have to go remote, funds can be used for that. Training, um professional development, also anything to do with cleaning supplies, sanitizing, um, anything that will help with um stopping the spread or minimizing the spread of the disease within the pool. Uh, they do promote a lot of repair of facilities, especially air quality. That is a high priority for a lot of the federal governments on this is making sure that air quality in the buildings is appropriate. Um, and then they're also saying that funds should be used to address the specific needs of certain groups. One of them is families of their low socioeconomic, um racial ethnic minorities, foster care, homelessness. Um, these are all ones that they would like us to target, uh, because they have been impacted more heavily due to COVID. Um, and then any type of preparedness that can be like how to um help with busing, uh, the food distribution, um, things like that, that would go beyond the academic realm. Technology is all also filling here. Mental health services and support, again, programming, learning loss. Um, and anything that um provides the continuation of um services. So we're gathering ideas. Um, just because you're giving me idea doesn't mean that's going to happen, but we're putting it down. And I will tell you, air conditioning has come up a lot. And um, there's no vote on this. Uh, the final application is due, I think it's um September twenty something. Um, and it is quite an involved process. You can also submit your ideas and the public can also submit their ideas through a survey that's online and it looks like this. There's the first page. It will ask you what your connection is to the schools, because they want community members from the community actually submitting it about their own communities, not outside organizations. And then these are the elements here that you could um address, and then your ideas in the final questions. It's a really short, easy survey. You can also email me. I've had people emailing me. And then I we have a variety of meetings. Just because a meeting is held at one particular school doesn't mean that you have to have somebody associated with that school. But if you have children at Doughty, you can go to the one at the Cohen School. And we have a number of those meetings coming up. So there are multiple ways that you can provide feedback. And if you'd like to provide me any right now, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, Member Saret.
I think I know the answer to this, but I I want to ask it anyway. I I know that finding substitutes is an ongoing challenge due to the pandemic. I I know it's been a challenge before that as well, but it could, i- is there a way to use any money from from the Esser to to incentivize people, just basically raise the the amount that we pay substitutes to possibly attract a a broader pool of substitute teachers and and substitute staff uh to the Bangor School Department? Is that is that a is that a possibility?
Um, that would probably be more of a harder sell. You have to demonstrate that it's somehow mitigating the effects of COVID. I mean, you're saying like if you paid them more, then possibly you would get more.
Right.
Um, I mean, it's possible that we could submit something like that. The other thing is you have to have sustainability. So would we be able to sustain those raises in future years?
Probably not, right? But I wondered if it could be just a short-term sort of Band-Aid of, you know, we we need you, we need substitutes, staff and te- and classroom teachers, so we're going to pay additional, I I don't know, I I I've just thrown it out there.
Yeah, it's not out of the realm. And I encourage people throw ideas and sometimes your idea might challenge somebody else to come up with another idea. Um, and you never know where it's going to go. Uh, we've also had ideas thrown out that we found other grants for, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Uh, Member Hassanin?
Um, I I just wanted to thank Dr. Harris Medberg for putting this together for us. Um, I also love that we are including the community. I think it's really, really important. I know a lot of community members have really appreciated, you know, the sense of ownership that we, you know, their voices are heard, they have input that they want shared and we're we're taking it seriously. Uh, my question is, could we um possibly have, you know, once you gather all the all the ideas, maybe having some posted on our website or, you know, uh, I know you, I know we can't do everything that people suggest, but just to kind of keep people informed, this is what we this is what we got, just taking people on that journey with us to keep them involved and engaged in this process.
Maybe.
Don't know, maybe.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Member Hassanin. Member Mundell?
Yeah, um, thank you, Kathy, for that um summary and for doing all the work involved in this. Um, it's kind of exciting and a little bit overwhelming to think about all the options. Um, following up on the parents' um comment earlier about her her child not getting IEP services during the school year. That, I assume, is something that we could, that would fit under the Esser funds, some somehow beefing up those services.
Actual actual services would have to go through the programming, but additional like loss of learning would fall under this.
Okay, so um so I I guess I'm just wondering. And maybe this is a more general question, how we can address those kids, how we can help those kids who have, you know, who who were struggling before the pandemic? Kids with IEPs and five oh fours, kids with mental health issues. If we have an idea of what the best avenue would be to help them to get back to where they, at least where they were. Hopefully better than than where they were. Um, and I think the first step in that, from my perspective, would be to do some kind of assessment with them, like to maybe even interview parents about what the, what they, what they need. I'm just kind of throwing stuff out there because I I I hear from a lot of parents with IEP, with kids with IEPs and five oh fours, and they're really there, there was a lot of um feeling out there that they weren't getting what they needed during COVID, so.
Wrote it down. Thank you.
Um, Dr. Harris Medberg, thank you so much for for being here. I was hoping that um you could tell everybody where they could find the survey online, if anybody would like to fill that out. Is that on?
So it is on our social media sites as well as our website.
Okay.
And there's a link that they just go to those links and they can click on. And also, it's also been on the Bangor app, so if they but I think it would depend on where, what their feed for is, but it's in multiple places. And they can always, like I said, contact my office too.
And will that be going home, um, like an email alert to all the the parents?
I don't know.
Like what we did um for uh the pathways? So that that might be a, that might be a a good thing. Um, and then I was hoping kind of on the line of Member Mundell, if you could, i- if you wouldn't mind sharing if you have anything to share of, um, you know, it says at the Esser Grant that addresses the needs of children, low-income homeless, foster care, IEP. What kinds of things are you seeing? What kinds of um strategies have you noticed from other school districts that they're starting to put in place? Or some of like, what what's the chatter out there?
Well, really, it's varied quite a bit, actually. I know Lewiston has invested in a lot of interventionist. Um, my concern with that, though, is that what is the sustainability? These people are going to have jobs for two years and then no longer have jobs and how will it impact their allocations? But they're willing to take that risk. We see a lot of um in experiential learning, that they're trying to get like outdoor learning experiences, things to get them basically excited about coming back to school. Um, there have been some school, one school I was listening to has done more work with their UTC Center uh trying to offer those types of learning again to get more students involved, thinking that maybe a different pathway would be more engaging for them. Programmings, people are always looking at programming. I I always sometimes tend to worry about whether we want to depend so much on like a program when we know that every child has different needs. Um, social workers have come up a lot, uh, and we have actual, or we are in the process of hiring one and a half more. Uh, so that's a positive. A lot of work on buildings. Maine has a lot of older buildings and we see a lot of people doing work with buildings, especially air quality. Bussing, I have heard so many places have bought buses, but we're not in that situation where um, because we contract out for that. But I've heard that a lot is we're buying a bus, buying vans, uh, things like that.
Excellent. Uh, Member Sword.
Um, we have several older buildings in our system, such as Fairmount, Mary Snow, Down East. What can we use that money in there to help improve the quality of those buildings? I mean, and when I look at Mary Snow and Fairmount in particular, they're about a hundred years old each building. Uh, you could pass for an antique if you wanted them to. Uh, my comment is, what can we use that money for to improve the quality uh in those buildings?
So one of the things would be air quality. And one of the grants that we did receive was six million dollars and and has all been um allocated for air quality. Um, and the every school has something that they're working on.
How about um in some of our other buildings where we still have some asbestos? Could we use that to help remove it as part of improving air quality?
That would be something that I'd have to look into, but I don't see why you couldn't. Um, I think another thing that people would have invested in, that you've kind of jogged another memory for me, is the um implementation of higher levels of uh technology. So, you know, bandwidth speed and things like that, um, bringing schools up to more a higher code.
Okay, because I was thinking of like Down East would be very useful for that, particularly with the the population that we have out there to help them.
Yep. Good.
Excellent. Thank you. Member Mundell?
Yeah, my understanding is you've already had a couple of meetings, is that right?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so how was attendance and?
It it really varies.
Okay.
Um, but the people that have been present have been very engaged and very thoughtful. Um, I think they've all, every every person that I've spoken to has given a lot of thought to what they feel that there are needs for. Uh, we're finding so thus far, and we still have quite a few meetings left, uh, air conditioning comes up a lot. Um, and part of it is because the buildings are old and they're warm, and then when you put a mask on, it feels uh more. And a lot of people have said, you know, there is such a thing as global warming, um, that even the the winters are hard. They're not, you know, like the six feet of snow, but we're finding there is a warmer. Um, air quality has come up a lot, as so as the social emotional needs of the students, getting students back into school, feeling that that transition might be a little bit harder. That's a concern for many parents.
Okay, thanks.
But I'm very, very pleased with the people who have turned out. They've been really very active and, I mean, it may not be huge numbers, but they they're really committed, the ones that have come.
Yeah, I think the word is still getting out there too about the meeting, so um, I think as time goes on, I hope you'll get more more people.
Um, I have another quick question. So I know that we um, we had a discussion and we voted on the partnership with PCHC at the high school to work on some of the social emotional. Are are any of these funds, funds that we can use to help support that project even more to expand it or?
No, because we cannot give it to another organization outside. And that would be considered giving it to, like somebody at one of the meetings asked, could we do it to hire more bus drivers? Well, we can't because we contract out. Um, and frankly, we can't even, I mean, we need bus drivers, but uh, we couldn't use it to pay extra drivers because they're an organization outside of the Bangor School Department.
But we could potentially use the money to configure within the school that would help support adding additional social workers or psycholo- psychologists or anything, because that would go toward the school. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um. Uh, another quick question, a process. So if you could just let us know, so this sort of gathering of information is happening right now.
It is.
And then then what?
So then, um typically, the administrators would get together. Uh, we have to also look through a series of priorities. So um, for example, like schools with high socioeconomic level or lower socioeconomic levels would have a higher priority than those who have less, you know, financial distress. Um, and then schools that maybe have more of these subgroups, like maybe have higher levels of ethnic minorities, or again, we have to look at those type of things and as well as the needs that we've heard, like what are what are the things that are bubbling up across the city? So what do we hear over and over? And what's something that's just like a one-time thing? And then where do we see the need? I mean, sometimes, you know, like an HVAC system is not like a really attractive thing, but it's a pretty valuable thing. But that's something that also is an expensive item or items when you have ten schools. Uh, so you know, there's all weighing these costs and benefits, and then ultimately, Mr. Tager has the final say.
Excellent. And will you be giving us um updates? Will you be coming back and joining us and kind of letting us know how the process?
I would assume so. And we are, and we will also, we have to post it on our website, so.
Excellent. Yes, Member Mundell?
At some point, would it be possible to get a layout of all of the the COVID funds that we've received and how they're being spent? State funds, federal funds. Is that uh something that could be that we could, that we could do? Because I I find myself kind of confused with all the.
You and me both.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better then.
Haven gave me so.
Okay.
Which one, which grant was this one from?
Okay, well, that makes me feel better because I I find myself getting lost with um all the different funding sources and where that money is going. If we could get a report at some point on on that, that would be really helpful.
Excellent. Thank you so much. It was really, really wonderful to have you um not only presenting, but presenting on such an important topic that's, you know, for that's that hopefully will be doing a lot of good for a lot of people.
I think it will.
So thank you for your work on this. Um, and then we have the MSBA proposed resolution.
Yeah, I would just, the the school committee will review the proposed MSBA resolutions. They're in your in your packet, and maybe just take a look at those and uh maybe somebody will be interested in in ta- taking that delegate responsibility at our next meeting. So I would just review that information.
Okay, excellent. So um, again, if if anybody is interested in attending that, please let me know, or Mr. Tager. Um, and then we have a report of reassignments.
Um, not yet. I think you missed one.
Oh.
Update on mentoring coordinator and graduation coach.
Okay, that's, yes. Um, so an update on mentoring coordinator and graduation coach.
Yes, tha- that's me. Uh, I just briefly want to tell you that um, two of the things I committed to do with you all, it was to work on mentoring and our graduation rate. Um, I met with interim principal Doyle this morning, and I want to just update you that we have a mentoring coordinator and a graduation coach. Uh, we are looking to recruit five hundred mentors, which if I don't say it out loud, it won't happen. And I'm going to be working with some of you to make those connections. Our current graduation rate is eighty-four percent, and the goal is to get to ninety percent. And we have those two people and they they fit a lot of And we have those two people and they, they fit a lot of what you heard Kathy talk about tonight with Esser, working with students who have needs, getting students back into school, and then paying, paying attention to all of our students. Our graduation rate overall is very good and we should be proud of it. When you look at students that are free and reduced lunch and students that are in special education, I, I believe we can do better. So those will be two things we'll work on. And just to give you a little update, the mentoring coordinator is going to be Julie Kimball. She has 11 years of principal experience. And so she will be housed over with interim principal Doyle and she will be working directly with me. And then we also have the graduation coaches, Justine Cohn. And she has experience as a counselor at elementary, middle and high school level. And interestingly enough, she spent time, she was telling interim principal Doyle and I, that she was an Indian education specialist in the Tacoma School District in Tacoma, Washington. So I think they both bring some pretty good things to the table. So we're excited about that. That's your update.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, wonderful. So now report of reassignments.
Okay, I'm reporting the following reassignments for school year 2122. Emily Robinson from self-contained teacher at Vine Street School to pre-K teacher at Vine Street School. Michelle Jacobson from self-contained teacher at Mary Snow School to special education teacher at Acadia Educational Unit. Pamela Fox from special education teacher at Acadia Educational Unit to self-contained teacher at Mary Snow School. Denise Vitam from self-contained teacher at Mary Snow School to resource room teacher at William S. Cohen School. Angela Lundey from resource room teacher at Fairmont School. Teresa, resource room teacher at Point Five Fairmont School and Point Five Mary Snow School. Jennifer Pratt from art teacher at Point Five Down East, Point Three Vine Street and Point Two Bangor Regional to art teacher at Point Four Five Down East, Point Four Five Vine Street and Point One Bangor Regional Program. You can tell that Kathy's been busy with all these numbers. Jenna, Jenna Callar from art teacher at Point Seven Fairmont and Point Three Fourteenth Street to art teacher at Point Six Six Fairmont and Point Four Fourteenth Street. Joshua Johnson from music teacher at Point Five Down East School, Point Four Abraham Lincoln and Point One Fourteenth Street School to music teacher at Point Four Down East School, Point Four Vine Street School and Point Two Fourteenth Street School. Jason Pagburn from physical education teacher at Point Two Vine Street and Point Eight Abraham Lincoln, the physical education teacher at Point Four Vine Street and Point Six Abraham Lincoln. Joel Bragden from physical education teacher at Down East School to physical educations teacher at Point Nine Down East School and Point One Bangor Regional. Zach Finney from physical education teacher at Point Five Vine Street and Point Five Fourteenth Street to physical education teacher at Point Four Vine Street, Point Five Fourteenth and Point One Bangor Regional. Deborah Friedman from Title One teacher at Point Four Five Fourteenth Street, Point Two Six Mary Snow and Point Two Nine Private Schools to Title One teacher at Point Two Fourteenth Street School, Point Five Mary Snow and Point Three Private Schools. Anne Chamberlain Small from music teacher at Point Five Fruit Street School, Point Three Vine Street School and Point Two Fourteenth to social worker district wide. Kristi Charette from literacy teacher at Point Eight Fairmont School and at Point Two Fourteenth to literacy, literacy coach at Fairmont School. Shayna Curtis from literacy coach at Vine Street School to literacy coach at Point Nine Vine Street and Point One Fourteenth Street. Shelley Moran from literacy, literacy coach at Abraham Lincoln School, Point Two Fruit Street and Point Three Mary Snow to literacy coach at Point Two Abraham Lincoln, Point Six Fairmont and Point Two Fruit Street. Katrina Rutherford from literacy coach at Point Nine Down East School and Point One Bangor Regional to literacy coach at Down East School. Deborah Sweat from literacy coach at Point Six Down East School and Point Four Fairmont School to literacy coach at Point Seven Down East School, Point One Bangor Regional and Point Two Mary Snow School. That is it.
Any questions from the committee? I, I do have one question, Superintendent Tager. If, if you could just remind the community why it is that the Bangor taxpayers are paying for point three of a, one of our employees to, to go out for private schools for the Title One teacher?
Sure, I will have Kathy answer that for you.
Her salary is funded 100% through the Title One grant that we receive. And part of that grant is that some of the allocation has to go to private schools. So it's not that we're paying local funds to that. It's just that we're following the federal guy, federal and state guidelines of what we have to provide for private schools.
Excellent, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So I think we are ready to move on to business action items. We have minutes from the regular meeting of July 21st.
We want to also mention August 11th to, to both.
Okay. Yeah, I've, I've, we, I think we have to do them separately. Do we do them separately, member Caruso?
I would prefer, because normally we could, but the attendance was different for.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do it separately for the, I'm recommending approval to the draft minutes of the July 21, 2021 regular school committee meeting.
Discussion?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette? Chair Sectors?
Yes. And then the special meeting of August 11th?
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the August 11th, 2021 special school committee meeting.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Member Caruso?
Abstain.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Abstain, I was absent.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yeah.
Chair Sectors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Financial reports?
I'm recommending the approval of the unaudited June financial report.
Need a motion?
Second.
And any discussion?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yes.
Chair Sectors?
Yes. And then the corporate authorization resolution for Bar Harbor Bank and Trust.
I am recommending the approval of the corporate authorization resolution for Bar Harbor Bank and Trust.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yes.
Chair Sectors?
Yes. And then do we have any nominations tonight?
We do. I'm recommending the following teacher nominations for the 2021 school year with one-year probationary contract. Would you be willing to approve them collectively? Lindsay Chadburn, Point Five Social Worker District Wide. Vanessa Bean, Special Education Teacher, Vine Street School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
I have a quick question. The social worker, could you update us on how many FDE social workers we have brought on board since COVID? I, I've kind of lost track.
You know by chance, Kristy?
Two and a half.
Yes, yes.
And Anne Small was transferred this evening to fill that 1.0. And then Lindsay Chadbourne was hired for part-time for the Point Five.
Okay, so, so that's 2.5?
1.5.
1.5.
But that doesn't count the one from last year.
Right.
So it's totally 2.5 since COVID.
Since COVID?
Yeah.
Because we added one last year.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, you added one last year.
Yes, okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can we take the block of extra duty assignments as they read in the?
We can, but I think we need to vote still, but yes.
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yeah.
Chair Sectors?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we're going to take the extra duty assignments as a whole.
Sounds good. I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for school year 2021, 2022. Matthew Leland, debate team advisor, Bangor High School. Madison Arno, Coach JV Field Hockey, Bangor High School. Tracy Reardon, Point Two Five IEP Coordinator, Fourteenth Street School. Paige Cordoret, IEP Coordinator, Down East. Emma Rappaport, IEP Coordinator, Fruit Street School. Erica Hutchkins, IEP Coordinator, Vine Street School. Suzanne Whitmore, IEP Coordinator, Point Five Vine Street School. Deidra Yo, Point Five YEIP Coordinator, Vine Street School. Anthony Crabtree, freshman advisor, Bangor High School. Evan Marshall, freshman advisor, Bangor High School. Jake, Jacob Gebhardt, band advisor. WSCS and JFDS. Jacob Gebhardt, instrumental advisor, Cohen and Doughty. Bert Forcia, Kurt Forcia, Point Five IEP Coordinator, Down East School. Jennifer Coolvord, Coolvord, Point Five IEP Coordinator, Down East School.
A motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Superintendent Tager?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yes.
Chairman Sectors?
Yes. And then we have some introduction items, some new policies based on the world of COVID.
May we take them together?
Yeah. Is anybody opposed to that? Nope, then yes, please, if you could do them together?
Yep, you will be looking at revised policy BDDF voting method and new policy BDDJ remote participation. They're both in your packet. I'm recommending the vote to receive approval of first reading of the revised new policies.
So moved.
Second, any discussion?
Member Caruso?
Yes.
Member Hassanin?
Yes.
Member Mundell?
Yes.
Member Sorg?
Yes.
Member Charette?
Yes.
Chair Sectors?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Okay, do we have any representative reports? All right. Information items. So Wednesday, August 25th is the beginning of the school year ceremony. That is at 8:00 AM at Bangor High School. All school committee members, if you could make it, it's a lovely, wonderful start of the school year and we would love for everybody to be there. Wednesday, September 1st is the first day of school. Sorry, kids. And Thursday, September 9th is our next regular meeting of the committee, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And September 26, 20, sorry, Wednesday, September 22nd at 7:00 PM is another, our next regular school committee meeting. Are there any final questions or comments from the committee? Yes, member Mundell?
Yeah, I believe the suicide, the suicide prevention policy mandates that we convene the suicide committee, suicide prevention committee at the beginning of the year. So I'm just wondering what's happening with that and and if we are reconvening that. And I also would just like to kind of throw out the idea that we, that we expand. I know it would take a, a new policy or a policy revision, but to expand it to just be a student wellness committee. Because we have so much, so much that we're dealing with, with student wellness. I think that might be a good idea.
What, what I can do is take a look at what that committee was charged with and see where the work stands right now and I'll report back to you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, member Charette?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Tager. I, I know there's, there's been different dates thrown around, but I've, I've been seeing that, that Pfizer is, is thinking that maybe by mid-October to late October, the, the two to 11-year-old shots might be available. Has there been any conversation, or have you been hearing anything from the state level about, or do you have any thoughts at this time on vaccine clinics in, in schools this year?
Report from our safety officer.
So we have actually been talking about vaccine clinics. And I've been working very closely with Kristy Babin to actually put those in place. We do have a vaccine clinic for those who need to catch up on their vaccines, taking place the week of August 20, 25th? Is on the 25th at Doughty and at Cohen. But we've also talked about vaccination clinics for COVID-19 as well and working with the Bangor Public Health Office to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We, to answer his question, do we know anything about when those vaccines may be coming out? I've heard different things. I've heard the end of September and I've heard as late as the end of the year.
I've heard the same in that the earliest I've heard is September. I've also heard October. But as soon as we hear more, we will make sure that that information is conveyed to our, our membership.
So the clinics for the younger kids will be through that? What was the organization you just mentioned?
Bangor Public Health.
Public Health. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for.
Thank you. Okay, yes, member Mundell?
Yeah, I have two questions about the COVID preparedness. First of all, when, when the final FDA approval goes through for the vaccines so that they're not emergency authorized anymore, is there any thought of mandating vaccines for faculty and students? That's one question. And then I, I'm wondering if you could speak to the issue of pool testing? And if we're going to participate in that, what the pluses and minuses are? Just kind of where your thinking is on that, Mr. Tager, thank you.
Yeah, I can do both. The, the first, first question, as far as mandatory vaccines, I don't think that Maine DOE is anywhere near that at this point. We, we have to do a survey of the amount of employees who are vaccinated, starting September 1st. And we'll do it monthly, but they want us to do a de-identified survey. So at, at this point, I think it would be a long way from there. However, Mr. Cardona, who's over the federal DOE, has certainly said that he thinks it's a good idea. And I know the state of California has done that, but I, from what I'm hearing here, I mean, we are not, we're allowed to ask if they've been vaccinated, but we're not allowed to obviously share that information with HIPAA. But I think we're a long way from what you're, you're suggesting. As far as pool testing, one of our planning team members is one of our best nurses. And I looked at that with her some, and I have a couple of concerns with it. One of the concerns would be as they did pool testing throughout summer school this summer and they only had one positive test. And what you're doing is having the students self-swab. And I just kind of wonder about our, our younger students. And the teachers would actually collect the swabs. And correct me if I'm wrong, and then the nurses would collect them. So I'm just wondering about the work, we're trying to get back to in-person and what the benefit actually is. And the other part of it is they don't have to quarantine. But if we're a fully masked district and we're outside of three feet, we don't have to quarantine either. So I don't know, if somebody could convince me what the gain is, I, I would be interested. But right now I haven't heard it. We talked about it with our principals and also with our planning committee. And we'll bring it up again. But I'm not, I'm not against it, but I don't see a good advantage right now.
Yeah, so, so you're saying that they, they don't need to quarantine anyway? So they're, so the testing is not going to?
With, with, the students are not going to miss school. Students that are vaccinated, which is in our reopening plan as well, it's recommended that if they were in close contact, that they get a test within three to five days. However, it's a recommendation.
Okay, okay.
I think that we're in a better position to keep students in school, but at the same time, we want to be healthy. So there's a lot to look at.
Okay, so the marginal benefit is not that great, it sounds like, from what you're learning.
But I'm open to hearing more.
Okay, that's how.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, member Saret.
Do you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I just had one more quick one on a, a COVID-related question, and it might be a question that Mr. Van Anstein might be able to actually answer. But I, I've been, I've been reading, because of the bus driver shortages and, and substitute bus driver shortages, I've been reading that some school districts are encouraging their coaches to get bus-driving licenses or whatever the certification is, that you need to drive bus, to drive a bus. I was just curious, is that, has that been a discussion at all with, with our coaches, or has, has that come up at all?
Yes, Tim, schools have done that. Some have done it. We have not had a, a need at this point. We've been able to use the, the bus system, change game times. We had some concerns about coaches feeling that they were responsible for not only taking care of the athletes on the bus, but driving. Some schools have done it successfully, but we are not at that point right now. We've been able to budget to keep, when I need to, to take a motor coach that would allow us to get to a destination before we have enough bus drivers available. So if we're leaving to Lewiston and we need to leave by three, two-thirty, and there's no buses, then we would take a motor coach. And what we've found is the difference of those long trips is very small because we pay per hour for the school bus, twenty dollars an hour plus so much a mile. But for the motor coaches, there's, you don't pay for the bus driver, and then after a certain mileage, the rate goes down. So I'll give you an example. We went to Oxford Hills with our softball teams and baseball teams, and we took two buses. And the bill was forty dollars less than taking two-track buses, motor coaches, to massive B-SIC. So we've been able to make do without using our coaches driving. And before we would do that, that would have to be, obviously, run up the flagpole, would talk to, you know, Mr. Tager and our, our administrative team because of the supervision. But schools have done it, and it's, it is something that I, I think we would be, if we did do it, it would have to be planned, not just to have a bus driver go get it and do it. That, at least from my point of view, I think we're better off where we are right now until, you know, we're convinced different.
Yeah, I, I want to thank Coach too, because what he's done too is he's really worked with Cohen and Doughty too, because there is a shortage of drivers, particularly after school, and we worry about the sun setting. So they've kind of worked creatively to get some schedules, so our kids will be able to play. We're really concerned about that. And, and also just to weigh in on what Coach said, I would have an issue with a coach driving their own team because there's enough stress and hard work of coaching and teaching as it is. If they were to drive a sport that was not theirs, I mean, that might interest me, but right now, I think he's got it worked out.
That's great, good. Thank, that's helpful.
Thanks, Tim.
Excellent, thank you. Member Hassanin and then member Caruso.
So Superintendent Tager, I was just wondering about, you know, given Commissioner, Commissioner Makin's decision about not quarantining students who are masked. And, and God forbid this were to ever happen, but if we have multiple students who, you know, test positive, what do we do in that situation? One, that's one question. And the other question is, for extracurricular activities, I know that you mentioned that if students have vaccinated or are vaccinated, they do, they do not have to sit out on that as well. Do we, how do we know? So like, are we collecting vaccine cards? Or how are we assuring or ensuring that students are vaccinated for the, for that specific purpose?
Yeah, those are a couple of questions. Let me clarify. First of all, the, with fully mask mandate, which is what we, what you all approved tonight, as long as they're outside of the three feet and they don't make contact with each other, if they make physical contact, then it becomes a quarantine situation. As far as, a lot of parents will want to hear this, if students are involved in extracurriculars, and I know that Coach V is, is working with the coaches. And of course, you know, I will always support the vaccine because I want this in-person education. But if our students are vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine. The requirement, not a requirement, the recommendation is that they test after three to five days. Now, of course, if they have symptoms, that's a different story. And I think the second question that you asked, and a lot of parents asked today too, we've, we've had those conversations with our principals, and we will meet with our planning meeting, planning committee each month. But if we're out of school for a period of time, we know that we have to shift. And we know that we're able to do remote because we've done it before. But our goal is this in-person instruction. As you look across the state, it was funny, I had a group of superintendents today asking, is anybody offering virtual? Nobody was. So I think everybody has this goal of in-person, and that's what I think our charge is. So that's what we're going to do, but if we have to, have to pivot, we've got principals that can do that, and we know we have teachers that can do that.
Okay, so the coaches would be the ones collecting vaccine cards or just?
I didn't answer that part. Our nurses are aware of who has been vaccinated. Is that correct, Ray? Yeah. Our, our nurses have a record of all of our students.
Well, I think they have a record of our students through our clinics, but not through outside clinics, correct?
Yep.
It's really weird to talk to you this way, I guess. Our nurses are actually able to look up each student's record, so they will be able to see if students are vaccinated for COVID-nineteen or not. It'll be on the, it will be on their vaccination record.
Okay, and that was my question. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm confused about that. How would they have access to that? If, like, my ki- my kids got vaccinated at Northern Light, how would the school nurse have access to that?
So there is a state database that nurses have access to.
I see.
That actually lets them know which students have access to what.
Okay, great.
Those vaccines.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Member Caruso?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to the athletic side of things and express my opposition to the theory of a, a coach being a driver, whether it's their sport or not. And I'd go so far to say, a staff member being a bus driver of a bus that's owned by somebody else, I, there's no place for that, i- if, we've got to have a different solution than that. And so I just expressed that now. And, and going back to the testing, you, you know, I, I, I think our mindset has to be, at this point, to make things as simple as possible. And we've tried to simplify it to make it the mask mandate, and then the rest can go on as normal. So anytime we add a layer, I think that adds stress to our students, stress to our parents in our community. So until we get to that point where we have to, I, I don't see any reason we would need to approach that. Obviously, if things change, this is, this is going to be a, a constant shift. But at this point, I would not be in favor of any kind of testing, because I, again, I think we want to lower that anxiety about whatever it is, and the mask is the best step forward, and, and I think we're doing a good job with that. And, and it sounds like the, the community has bought into that as well.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that, member Caruso. Okay, seeing no other questions, I would make a motion for a German.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to assume there's going to be no discussion, so.
Member Caruso.
Yes.
Member Hassanin.
Yes.
Member Mendel.
Yes.
Member Sword.
Yes.
Member Saret. Chair Sectors.
Yes. Okay, oh, wait.
Eight forty-five.
We're done. Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
So cool.